Those opposed? There is nothing that passes your name. Okay, Ms. Gillis.
Right, we're gonna do the ten. Oh, I'm on. We're gonna have the discussion where we are starting from with the tenure plan and I'd like Brian Archer to take the lead.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Gillis. Mayor and Council, tonight we're gonna have a conversation about the tenure model. I'd like to recognize that Lisa Yogg and Tab Nielsen are here, so when I screw up, they will correct me.
They do that all the time?
Yeah, they do, absolutely. So, I do want to offer that this does feel late and it probably feels a little out of order for you all. And that's partly because we delayed this process a little bit this year to recognize city councils retreat and that's normally happens in February. You had that in June. And so, instead of bringing this to you in June, it kind of waited a little bit. So, I apologize. It probably feels about a month late and it really is. And so, what's really interesting about the presentation tonight is we're presenting data to you that is older in nature because it's really an update to the 2020 tenure model. So, what we've done is taken 2020 actuals, made some changes to preliminary information and then put this here. So, what you're gonna see on here is certainly not where we are now as an organization and will look a little bit different here in just a month. So, please understand where we are in the process. Next slide. So, on the scheduled events, we're presenting the tenure model tonight. On the 23rd, we're gonna come to you all and present an update on the utilities. Sharon and her team, along with support from the engineering group in Jacqueline, have been presenting kind of what they saw with the water master plan over the last year and a half or so. And on the 23rd, it will be a continuation of that. The first workshop is scheduled for September 27th. First reading of the budget October 4th, next workshop on the 11th, and then the proposed adoption of budget on October the 18th. What you'll notice up there is the pay plan is still a T V D. H R's working through a lot of stuff on the pay plan. It's possible it'll be ready and will be a part of the budget presentation. There are terms paid up by next week. If that doesn't happen, then they will come to you with the pay plan just a little bit after that. What's also not out there is we are shooting to get you the budget document by Labor Day, like always. So, that gives you something to do over that holiday.
Yes. Can we adopt the pay plan with, or can we adopt a budget of pay plan?
Yes, yes. So, we've historically adopted the pay plan as late as December. Yeah. So, we will have estimates built in and we'll hear about those tonight. And they always, always, most of the time, make sure it fits under that. Great question. Next slide. So, we just talked about this a little bit. The new models run from 2021 to 2030. Certainly, a lot of changes with COVID and the ongoing pandemic. A lot different than what we saw last year, much more positive news. Next slide. So, talk a little bit about what we call all fund changes. So, these are items that affect every fund that we work with, general fund, parks fund, water fund, et cetera. One of the things you see up there is market rate adjustments. So, when we prepared the budget last year, we had a zero in for 2021. And now that we're doing a little bit better, the organization is looking at a possible one and a half percent change that would be retroactive this year. For 2022, we had that number put at two percent. With the movement in the market, we're now moving that up to a three percent. H R's still working through all of those details, part of the reason why the pay plan might be delayed a little bit. And if we add kind of a double work to them by doing a retroactive, that makes their job apart because they've got to prepare the retro 2021 and the proposed 2022 all in a very, very short period of time. And then you'll see in the outer years, we didn't make any changes. Some positives on healthcare. We had five percent in the model for 2021. That's what council approved. It actually came back at zero. So, that was super exciting. Yep. Put those dollars back in. That helped the plan. We also are trending in a very positive way in 2021. So, we're hoping the 2022 number will be about three percent instead of five. So, that's exciting. And then, some of the line items that we proposed last year, we're gonna keep some of those reductions. As a leadership team, we decided to see if we can work under some of that. And so, you'll see some add backs when we get to the budget presentation, but a lot of those are staying at the lower levels for now. So, next slide. So, what you see here was the initial tenure model that sits in the budget book. Down in the bottom right-hand corner, you can't quite see that on the screen, but it was basically even. Next slide. And what you see here is the revised one. And ultimately, in the bottom right-hand corner, that shows a positive number of about $22 million. So, really exciting news. Everybody wants to run out and spend those dollars. Our team certainly was excited to see this, but we've got a lot of things that we've got to pay for. And remember, what you're seeing here is a few items. Number one, it's the better-than-expected 2020 results. So, we had better revenue. We spent less money. That's to the tune of about $7 million. If you remember back in April, we took to you the carryover ordinance. And as part of that, I talked to you about one-time funds. And historically, we've taken those one-time funds and set them aside. This model has them in it and it's about $7 million, okay? And we talked about some of these updates, update to healthcare, some changes to revenue. We'll talk about that here on the next slide. And the reductions in line items are all built into here, okay? So, kind of our starting point was 22 million, a good number. But there's a lot of cuts that we're needing to add back into this. Okay, next slide. So, we took it a high-level look at the revenues. We'll dive into these a little bit deeper here in just a minute. We'll go really deep into sales tax and auto use, so I won't spend too much time on those. As you can see, both positive changes on 2021. We did pull back a little bit on 2022, expecting maybe a slowdown after the pandemic, after everybody runs out and buys all the stuff and takes all the travel that they gotta pay their credit card bill off a little bit. We'll see if that really does come to fruition. A big item that I want to make sure we talk about is related to the inclusion of the urban renewal funds. So, you may remember that the urban renewal paid off, not them specifically, but the developer paid off their debt in the Rawson Fields last year. As part of that, those dollars, sales tax dollars now come back to the city. And that's about $590,000 or so, $600,000 per year. That started immediately in 2021. We are counting those dollars in the model. The other thing we did is in '29 and '30, the urban renewal will return all of their funds back to the city. We included those dollars as well. So, if you remember, we talked about now that the model goes out to 2030, those dollars are in clay. And that's about $5 million. So, if you add those together, you're talking about $11 million or so that came into the general fund from a revenue perspective related to the urban renewal. But that also means if those dollars are spent, so they cannot be used as it's modeled today for something else. Auto use, we were kind of expecting a pullback. Saw a pullback all the way last year. We talked about this in the spring till the last quarter and then it boomed. And then, we're having all these challenges this year getting new cars, which has created a huge demand for used cars and that market's gone bonkers. And so, as price goes up, our taxes go up. So, auto use is actually doing better than we had expected. Property tax, not a lot of growth quite yet. Council and Mayor brought this up before related to the Gallagher Amendment, but we are seeing that starting to show a little bit in the future, so we made some adjustments to that. Building revenues are slowing down, but still above our budget and above our minimum, so we're good. And then, interest revenue kind of created a weird issue last year where the investments we were holding became more valuable because they were paying higher interest rate. So, those either got cold or we had to sell them. But then now, we're buying back at a much, much, much lower level. And so, interest revenues will obviously head down. For example, local government investment pools today, the short-term rate is .02. So, think about that, .02. It's not even worth the paper that you're printing that information on. So, it's a difficult environment. The next few slides are really just a graphical representation of sales tax. You hopefully can read that. If you can't, what you saw, what you can see up here is, starting in 2010, the city really moved forward pretty dramatically on its sales tax increases. And we can talk a long time about what we did with all of that, but that really enabled us to increase our contributions to streets, expand our police force, really do a lot of wonderful things with the city dollars. Saw it kind of slowing down in '18 and '19 and then the boom last year, nine percent in 2020, which is kind of caught us all off guard. And then, you know, we're seeing some of that carryover in 2021. We'll talk about that. We have what amounts to about a five percent increase budgeting here between four and five percent. And then, a settling down over the next couple of years and then a return to a more, a similar growth pattern that we've experienced. Next slide. And so, again, this is just seeing that green being new, blue being what it currently sits like. So, you can kind of see, you know, we're growing more in the front end than we were expecting. Next slide shows that on a graphical basis related to dollars. So, you can kind of see what we're doing is really resetting that base and then moving forward from there. So, that delta exists, not as large in every year, but there's a pretty nice delta and the dollars are down below. So, you kind of figure out pretty quickly that that's a big helper on the sales tax side. A reminder on that, 20% of every dollar that comes in has to be spent on capital related to sales tax. So, while you're looking up there and saying, hey, wow, that's an additional $5 million, it's really not. It's $4 million to the operating fund and a million to the capital fund. And we'll talk more about that here in the budget presentations coming up. Next slide. We take a look at auto use. Ms. Gillis likes to say that this is cyclical. Every, I think when she first got here at the city, she said every eight years. I'm not sure if that was the number we had talked about, but it's been right on.
I don't want to say anything like that.
So, why are we understanding this? So, if you look up here, that is almost exactly what our cycle has been, is we see a growth pattern and then a pretty significant pullback about every seven to 10 years. It's been only eight years, the last few. And you can see that's kind of what we're projecting again. Again, a kind of a surprise to us in 2020 with that big run-up in the fourth quarter. And then, the next few slides do the same thing. Just our, on a percentage basis, what it looks like with that huge run-up and then kind of slowing down in the outer years. And then, on a dollar basis, if we go to the next slide, again, those changes throughout. If we go to the next slide, this is a summary of our different revenues, our larger revenues. And we'll just spend a minute on this slide if we could. The first column shows what our budget is today. The next column shows where we think it might go, okay? Now, the next column is not in the data that you're looking at right now. That's going to be the data that we're using to create our budget presentation for you in the next month. And then, so that's the estimate. And then, the third column is where we are now, where those increases sit. So, everybody can go up there and right away look at 22% of the sales tax and say, Brian, why are you so conservative? Why are you chicken little in this thing? What's going on? And I think that's a fair question. And we would answer it by saying, remember, what we're looking at is five months of data. And that five months, last year, two and a half of those five months, we were completely shut down as a society. So, you couldn't do anything. And the opening last year, if you want to call it that, started in the third and fourth quarter and kind of continued before we saw another shutdown. And so, we had some pretty big growth patterns last year in the third and fourth quarters. And so, this increase will shrink as we move forward. Will it go all the way down to 10%? We think so. That's where finance is at. Hopefully, it won't go lower than that. I don't think it will. We are seeing some changing habits and we'll talk about that next Monday when we present to you the major report about what people are doing from their buying habits. But what we really are seeing to give you a pre-clue to that is the online sales are staying up. And we are cashing increased online sales after the Marketplace Facilitator Act that we've talked a lot about, that you all approved in the fall. We're seeing companies like DoorDash and eBay and Wayfair and places like that to start collecting and remitting to the city, which is wonderful because we weren't getting it before. And so, that's next. We can, pardon me, count on that moving forward.
You can get it.
Amazon, we got, starting actually in 2016. So, but to answer your question, Amazon continues to walk, just up and up and up and up and up. I laugh. If there's not a package delivered at my house every day, something's wrong. Seriously, that's no joke.
I'm the same way and I used to be the chamber person. I mean, it's still shop local, but it's just so easy.
It's just easy. I mean, you, you, you forget that you're out of paper towels and you're just like, do, do, do. Paper towel show up tomorrow. So, we're seeing that across the city. And it's a benefit to the city in the sense that it hurts shop local for sure from the small business perspective. But where it's a benefit is if you normally bought your shoes from the Flatiron Small and you now buy them from Amazon, we now get that sales tax. Where before, the Flatiron Small got it and Westminster got it. And so, it helps our bad certainly in that, you know, big picture, back away, look at things. General use taxes up. Some businesses did spend, which was nice to see. And we're hoping that that will continue. But usually, what we see in general use is we see pockets of big spend and then it just flattens out a ton. And so, we're kind of expecting that to flatten out. Auto use, we've talked about. Billionaires were right where we, we were hoping to be. Ryan's team can certainly talk to that. Court revenues, down a little bit. And again, courts are not supposed to be a revenue generator. This is just reflecting what's happening. And, and then finally, H U T F, which is your gasoline tax. And even though gas prices have gone up, but taxes isn't changing and people are still driving less. People are still commuting, not commuting, excuse me, smoking for a moment, they can. And so, this is certainly driving that down a little bit. All the way to the end, just for perspective, gives you an idea of what 1% means. So, you can calculate these again when you're studying up on the budget over Liberty. Next slide. So, after all that, let's talk a little bit about what we have to pay for in this next budget cycle and what you'll see. Body worn cameras, big state mandate. We're estimating that tenure cost at about $14 million. Pretty big number there. We talked about the salary range adjustments already. We have large capacity needs. You've been hearing about this for a while. It was a conversation at the retreat. We're having some pretty high turnover, so really looking at how we can retain employees and what we can do. And maybe they're not dollars tied to that, but there's certainly concerns there. And then, you know, the theme of taking lasting care has been around a while and we need to continue dedicating to that. Next slide. Now, we'll dive into some of the other funds. Parks fund, apologize that we can't see the bottom right-hand corner of this, but basically, the parks fund is doing okay. Certainly, the challenges we have, if we go to the next slide, we can talk a little bit about it. Open space revenues are doing well. They're up, trending above the budget. Cash transfer from the city is still at budget and we're still able to do that, which is wonderful. And then, we've talked a bunch about Apex. I know there's some meetings coming up, really deciding what our split might look like. I put in red what the amount is right now as estimated reimbursement from Apex. And depending on what the proposal will look like, we'll change the model that you just saw. And so, if we do anything other than what's up there right now, so right now, we have a 50-50 payback for '21 and '22 to help Apex come out of the pandemic. And then, the 85-15, which is currently in the models and currently the agreement throughout. So, if this number changes up or down, it will affect what the parks is able to do with their dollars. For context. Next couple of slides, we can look through relatively quickly. This is the T I fund, the first fund. And again, these, both of these funds have a lot of work that are being done to them during the budget process. So, don't read a ton into these, but this one shows a negative. If we go to the next slide, it shows a positive. And really, what the police department does each year is, where there's opportunities between the funds, they move positions around to balance. So, both these funds will balance before we bring them to you. Next slide reflects what happened in the general fund around urban renewal revenues. Again, same benefits to the T I funds. They're, they follow the general fund. They have sales tax, they have auto use, et cetera. Couple of things to note. Still need to identify a solution for evidence storage. This has been on their list for a couple of years and we're working towards that. That will be, you will see this as a one-time need and an ongoing need. Body worn cameras, we already talked about that. And then, again, officer retention is a really important thing right now with all the challenges that they're facing nationally, locally, and really trying to figure out how we can continue to attract and retain the best of the best, which we have. Next slide. So, we dive into the water fund. And unfortunately, you can't see this again all the way to the right, but the water fund shows a pretty significant fund balance at the end of 10 years. The reason behind that is when we were modeling this, we modeled a 7% fee rate increase every year. So, that's a very big number and that was just modeling, okay? And so, we will talk to you a lot more on the 23rd about the various types of reinvestment we could do. But what we were trying to figure out here is if we did that, how much reinvestment could we make and what would it mean? And so, when we come talk, we'll get deeper into that. But I just want to show one with that in there and then if we go to the next slide, we just talk about what challenges they're facing. So, water use, it's kind of a double-edged sword, right? We're out there telling you to conserve and conserve and conserve, but we're in the business of selling water. And so, it's kind of an interesting business to be in. Tap fees are way, way, way behind. So, we'll talk more about that. I don't want to steal any thunder, but I can tell you that per acre foot costs of purchasing water are going through the roof. And so, we're gonna need to catch up as a city. And so, how we do that, we'll figure all that out. That's what we're gonna do.
Brian, are we still as a city needing to purchase water rights to be able to move them so that we can have sufficient water rights for our tap fees? Or do we already own enough water rights?
So, that will depend on gross rest of farm.
But gross is storage, not, not supply.
Yeah. So, it's both, right? Is my understanding on gross, it's both, right? We have the rights to purchase additional water if needed, but it's storage as well. Get 3,000 acre feet.
Yeah, right.
But then, if we need to buy extra water to help, we can do that too, I think. I may be speaking out of turn, but yeah. As far as buying water rights for the future, that would be a very question for Sharon and her team. We need more on that.
But the past discussions been that if we get what we're supposed to get out of gross, that's gonna mean it.
We've got water for build-out.
For build-out, if we get gross.
Now, that in S I D, we want to sell our supply at a discount.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think we still need to be market for, for, for tap fees, but, but it's maybe a different calculation for us than it is for some communities that are actually needing to acquire that supply. It would be good questions for Sharon.
Yeah. And then, the other thing we're talking about too is the transition from a build-out to maintain. And how do you pay for that?
Right, right.
So, big decisions and they're off in the future, but they're starting to come into play. When you're doing a tenure model and in the utilities funds, we're talking about 20, 30, 40-year models, these conversations have to happen. So, we talked about a bunch of that. If we flip to the wastewater fund, the off, what you're seeing here is if we were to make the investments without then adding additional rates, what it would do to this model. And so, this model is completely broken, as you can see on your screen, but this says if we did no increases. And so, just for counsel to look at two different scenarios. Again, this will not come to you like this, right? It's just a start of the conversation. Next slide. Wastewater is working on a master plan, just like water that was directed by city council a couple of years ago. And so, we're getting through all of those as part of your strategic plan. And really, there will be additional needs that are gonna come out of here. What we know already is TLC gotta reinvest. Some of these plants and infrastructure are 60 years old, 50, 60 years old. And we've really got to get them up to speed so they last another 50 or 60 years. And so, excited to show all of that, but there are some hard conversations behind that. Next slide. Take a look at stormwater. And stormwater, if you remember, a couple of years ago, was it two years ago we did the, the impervious area work?
At least two, yeah.
Yeah. That really helped the stormwater fund because you got back out and refigured out who would add to driveways and, and et cetera. And so, that helped. They haven't had a rate increase for a while. They'll probably look at adding back in kind of the every other year rate increase. For you that have been here a while, remember, we had proposed that years ago. They had stopped that with the impervious area, but we'll need to go back and look at that again. If you remember, stormwater is really to help us with those capital needs that the other water and wastewater can't quite get to. And so, if you go to the next slide, you can see there'll be a master plan there as well. We also moved the management of, of stormwater from utilities to public works more to the engineering group so they can build it into their ongoing capital needs. And so, it's been going quite well. And so, excited to see how that all comes out. So, if we go to the next slides, talk a little bit about the golf fund. So, the golf fund is kind of, we talked about this at previous presentations, is kind of in two different unique businesses right now. One, you've got golfers who are able to get outside and are just loving it and have found this new revival to golf. And so, rounds are going up and people have found it something they can do. And then, on the restaurant side, restaurants face the same limitations as any other restaurant. And so, they're restricted in the sense of COVID. And then, you come out of COVID and then you run into hiring challenges. And also, if you remember, as part of the work that was done with the expansion of the clubhouse, the restaurant was going to do banquet's in some larger conferences. And they were also going to then be managed out of a central location, which was the Arabella Center. While we don't operate the Arabella anymore. So, a lot of things are changing out on the golf side of it and you're all well aware of this. And so, really, as a team, we, we recognize that. Gordon's team's working hard on that and really, you know, it's probably time to relook at stuff and really re-understand where are we today and what is that being moving for? Are we gonna be able to meet that debt service requirement? Are we gonna still be able to do the banquet's that we talked about with the way we sit today? And so, the golf fund, you can see, is certainly still in the negative. They're trending positively and really working hard to make those debt payments and get that fund balance back up. And will this be sustainable moving forward? We still gotta work on that. And so, there'll be further conversations with council on that. And I think we just talked about.
That's got a question.
So, I just have a quick question about expenditures. If we anticipate restaurant and the lack of revenue coming in, we're gonna change around some of those expenditures to get these
Yeah, absolutely.
out of the negative.
Yeah. So, the restaurants have been doing, and I'll speak and maybe Gordon can correct me, but the restaurants have been looking at anything. You know, they've been trying closing on Mondays. They've been trying closing, you know, from two to six or working on different scenarios so that they don't have staff there when, when they're not needed. And also, remember, one of the challenges restaurants faced last year was, you know, as an organization, we took the philosophy of making sure we took care of our employees no matter where they worked. And that was a challenge too, because you ended up with staff. And a lot of that staff was put to work in other places, which was wonderful. But you know, it's staff that if you were operating a private restaurant, you may not have kept.
And they stay under the, the golf fund?
It was kind of a balance of both, certainly. The challenge we've got with the golf fund is they're an enterprise fund and they can only get so much support before they lose that status. And then, if they lose that status, they kind of become a governmental fund and it changes a lot of things for them. So.
Can you name a room at the, at the restaurant? Can you say like the community first foundation room and have them pay 50, 50, 50, yeah?
We can under the council's naming policy. It can apply to rooms.
From this place.
That's a good one. That'd be nice. And then, one of the other things is the, the V C N team is working really hard on trying to reimagine Lake Arbor Golf. You know that there's some challenges out there related to safety and playability and trying to come up with some possible different solutions. Some really neat ideas, but they're pretty progressive. And I don't know if that golfing community is ready for that yet. And so, that may not be part of this budget process, but I just want to put it out there that they're really trying to reimagine Lake Arbor.
I'm, I'm curious, with Lake Arbor's close proximity to Indian Tree, do they wind up splitting just the, the east side community golf?
You know?
No. No, they're totally different experiences, so not even comparable.
Okay.
It's very different clientele for each one of those.
Right.
Very different, like one wouldn't go to the other.
Okay.
Don't you think, Brian, the?
I, I would agree. Adam, Gordon, do you have a thought? I agree, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're completely different types of golf courses.
Okay.
And would offer that both golf, golf operations are doing quite well. And they did really well last year and they continue this year. So, will, will that last? I don't know. Maybe. Last time they saw a big golf revival, it lasted a while, many, 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 many years that, that people played. So, if we flip to the last slide, we just put a little bit out there about future. So, um, if we flip to the last slide, we just put a little bit out there about future strategic opportunities that I know council's well aware of these. But again, how do we deliver services moving forward? I think council's direction wasn't an either or, it was an and, a real conversation, which was a nice direction to receive. And so we're as an organization trying to figure out how we do the and, not the either or. And really, again, I'm talking in person versus remote versus online versus over the phone versus all of that. And we just, we're taking the approach, it's, it's an and, it's in everything. And so how do we meet those? Um, security, this has been an ongoing and will be an ongoing thing, both from a building perspective and from a technology perspective. And so we're doing, we're moving, we're moving in these directions, but it's expensive. Both sides are expensive. Infrastructure, well aware of these, still need to uh have a gap on the street maintenance sign. Uh, a little bit of a wild card thrown in there now that you add ADA and the assessments that we did. Um, sidewalk and trail gaps, good plan on that. And uh, again, it takes time, we don't, you know, these plans are fifteen, twenty year plans, they're not two and three year plans. Condo fibers in green, I think we're getting super close there. Um, I think we've lit, I think is the proper term. Um, some of the fiber, I know, some of the fiber, and I think it's, it's going quite well. I know they've done some tremendous work on some traffic lights and they're gathering data right now and really, I think we're going to be a model city when it comes to that. And then we talked about ADA already, and then of course demographics, homelessness, obviously a challenge throughout the Denver Metro and in Norvada. And then uh growth and density, where we look like five years, ten years, twenty years. Is that possible?
That was well done. Any additional questions?
I, I do have, I do have a couple of questions or one question anyway, or an observation question. So, um, you know, a couple of the things that I didn't see reflected on just these synopses are a couple of things we're involved with, which is like uh our subsidy to the Arvada Center.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, I didn't see anything in, in, in here about, you know, is our assumption just we're, we're, we're doing, you know, we're doing that unless you hear different for probably from, from, from our side, but.
Yeah, absolutely. What we've done with that is we've flatlined the cash transfer.
Okay.
At uh approximately one point six million. Um, and then the in-kind, which is just a, you know.
The building thing, and we've applied our.
We apply, actually it's on, it's on an actual basis. So all of the things that feed to that from the different entities throughout the city, you keep track and then you just pick that up. Some years it goes up a lot, some years it's not as much.
Right, okay.
That averages two point one to two point three million.
Okay. Um, and so then the others are then we've got, um, you know, there was some built into the tenure model, the expiration of the urban renewal areas. Um, there was uh, um, touched on their Apex, our Apex thing, which of course we'll have more information on as we go forward. Um, third thing are, there are um some small things that maybe don't add up too much, but maybe do. But it's like the leasing parking lots from Saint Anne's, uh, support for the historical society. Um, Chamber Commerce, right, they pay.
Visitor centers in the room?
Yeah, visitor center, not, and not, not monetary support to the chamber, but they occupy one of our, our structures. Um, those types of things. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing you guys have those all built into the model in one way or another. How did things like that ever get to kind of a reevaluation points or, you know?
That's a really good question, actually. Um, as part of last year's look at uh the budget and what we would call recession planning or changing, all of those came up. And so we have a pretty big list of similar type items. And we discuss them internally and really deciding, is it time to have conversations with them? What should we look at? And uh, and then, you know, what Morgan or in their recommendations on what we should do and then bring them up to council. Uh, on the overall conversation around that, I think we would look to you either through a strategic retreat or something to really get deeper into that. Yeah, you're right, the specific dollar amounts on each one of those is not terribly large, but when you put them together, it can be pretty.
Oh, we were talking about, you know, like C M L, Metro Motors, Dr. Koff, all those different.
Yep.
Entities that we're part of.
Right.
Well, and then, and then one more is, I know this year's G A S B or whatever requires better evaluation of all the leasing. Organ, operations that the city engages in, um, which we lease a bunch of things like the Allen House and the Food Bank and all, all a number of things. And then we lease a bunch of things, all of which, again, no one of them is much, but in total, maybe become a significant item in a, in a ten year model, especially being carried out to that tenth year. Um, and again.
Is that something that council would like to see a report on, you know, listing of those periodically or?
Well, you guys have to do it now for your, for your financials, so it's something I would like to see if, for nothing else, just to be more educated on kind of all of the uh. Uh, all of the actions or all the, the interests the city has uh with those financial instruments, so.
We had done that last year so we could, attaching it to a weekly just to then see if you have questions, are we going to do that? Not this week, not. Get that as part of the budget, because I do think it would be interesting, whenever we look at it as a leadership team, we all, you know, you take pause. And then this year in our conversation is really about where we're at post-COVID and some of those, you, you know, we have the discussion, then you also have that if they ever needed it.
Right. Well, and, and even, even a look at, do we have the right uh philosophy going forward there about those being in a, in a ten year model? So we have a ten year model that we're pretty careful to work into salary range increases every single year and, and charges for water, you know, those kinds of things. Those anticipatory um budgeting things. Do we have, you know, increases in both the leases where we're the lesee and the leases where the lessor, those ought to be fixed. But the, the things for the, where the leases, again, any one of them isn't very much, but when you add them all together, maybe that becomes a number that, that, that is meaningful for us.
Can I raise the rent on the chamber?
Uh, no, no, I'm not grabbing any particular action, but, but I think for us is evaluating these financial things, but it's important that we, that we. That it was a.
At least know what they are. You can't raise your rent, Nancy, on a historical society, have to be careful.
We'll keep our banquet.
Keep it, keep in mind, I did bring up support for the historicals. I was on the, actually the other side of that equation.
Okay, any other questions? Good presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Ms. Gilz, the strike was going to happen next.
We are going to, and actually what I'll do is I'll have to Gordon. We're going to, we are going to do a journey first, that's right.
Oh, or actually a journey? Okay, we're adjourned.